Okay, folks, we should probably begin our work session, Iowa City City Council Work Session for Tuesday, August the 6th, 2019. The first topic on our work session agenda is to continue discussion of the development review process. But before we do that, I want to again welcome Mazir Saleh back from Sudan.
Thank you.
It's great to see you, Maz.
Thanks.
And I'm glad you returned safely and all that.
Yeah. I'm glad I'm here.
Yeah, I bet. Okay, how are we going to proceed, Jeff?
Well, I thought I'd just give a quick overview of the staff memo and then hopefully allow you all to have a discussion and staff is here to help answer questions and guide you through that. You do have a memo in your August 1 information packet under the work session heading. This follows the joint work session that the city council had with the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 24th that was facilitated by Tony Perez of Optico's Design. I thought that was a great discussion that the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission had and we want to just take this opportunity while that's fresh in your minds to dive a little bit deeper into the specifics of our development process here in Iowa City and start to learn from you what changes you may want to make to the process or clarifications you may want to make to the process. So the memo that you have in the packet starts by giving a very brief summary of the land development process. There's a figure there that takes you from comprehensive planning all the way to final permits and inspections. I would encourage you to look at the attachment to the memo if you haven't had a chance to already, but that will give you a much more detailed rundown of what takes place in each of those steps. And I think that's just a handy reference for you to bookmark on your computer or to keep as you see different projects come and go at different stages. You can always refer back to that to know exactly what you're looking at when you're reviewing that and what staff is looking at when we have administrative reviews. In the memo, we gave a very brief overview, kind of the takeaways that we had as staff from that July 24th work session. I'll let those speak for themselves and you all can share your insights and thoughts on how that meeting went if you wish. But really, the crux of the issue today is really getting at where we might have some misaligned expectations on the development process. And we're talking about expectations, we have to realize that there's multiple stakeholders in the process. There's staff, there's developers, there's planning and zoning, there's council, and there's the general public as well. And our observation as staff is that in the last couple of years, some of those expectations for what is required at various stages and what applications are going to be judged on are again misaligned at times. So we end the memo with three questions that we'd like you to focus on tonight. And of course, if you think that you need to spend some time talking about other related issues, we'd encourage you to do that. But the first question would be, given what is required by code now for applications, and that's contained in the memo, and we're going to primarily focus on rezonings because I think that's where probably 90% of the issues are. If you look at what we are requiring for those applications, are there certain instances where you want more information? And can we clarify that upfront with the developers, with the public, with again the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff? Tony talked a little bit about this in his presentation, but it's not always that two rezonings aren't always equal. And it may be that for some rezonings, the council expects a higher level of detail, and that's not uncommon. So don't think that that would be an unusual step for a city council to take. For example, most cities have a higher level of scrutiny on projects that take place in their central business district. Some will have design review elements, some have design review committees, but there's oftentimes a higher level of review. During the meeting, the gateways came up. I think a Planning and Zoning Commissioner mentioned that there should be a higher level of scrutiny as you're coming in off of I-80 or maybe if you're coming in off Highway 1 or 6 into our community, maybe there's a higher level of scrutiny. Could be projects of a different scale or different land uses. Maybe you want to give a higher level of scrutiny to multifamily projects over a certain size. Those, one of the discussions we want you to have, what do you feel are those thresholds? And what types of situations do you find yourself really wanting more information? And in what situations are you comfortable making your decision on the current requirements? Is that the crime dog just walked by?
It was.
Okay, all right. Sorry. McGruff the crime dog just walked by. Caught my attention.
He got away.
That's question number one.
McGruff.
Question number two drills at specific issues that may be causing some consternation either at the planning and zoning review or the council review. So some of the staff's observations, frequently there's conversations about the open space standards for multifamily projects. If that's the case, then I'd encourage the council to give staff some direction on what you'd like us to review. And let's actually amend the code so that those standards are known upfront to the developers, and I think they'll be more than happy to comply with those and to work with staff to get those done. What gives them heartache and some financial concern is when they have to address those during the process through conditions that are made at the table, whether again that be at P&amp;Z or council. They'd rather address those upfront in the design. So we talked about minimum open space standards. Sometimes it might be our building standards. So what does the building look like? What type of materials? What kind of transparency needs to be built into a structure? So we have multifamily design standards, we have commercial design standards, and staff applies those during the kind of the tail end of the review. That's part of the administrative review process. After you do the rezoning, we will look at those design standards and apply them. So if you're seeing projects built and you're not happy with the way that they're looking or you notice some common flaws in buildings, then I'd encourage you to let us know and let us see if we can amend our design standards to address those. So again, it's known upfront and not, it doesn't have to be done through conditions during the process. And then a question we've asked of you at the end, and it may be premature to put this on the table tonight depending on how long this conversation goes, but what are some of your priorities for staff? And where do some of these text amendments or zoning code changes on application materials fit in with some of your other priorities? And we mentioned a few on here. We still have an affordable housing review, which frankly may or may not be in conflict with some of the review as we get into talking about things like design standards. We also have what I think will be stemming from your adoption of a climate resolution tonight. We need to examine our code and look at how we could enhance our code to meet the climate challenges ahead of us. So again, just helping us prioritize and letting us know what is your, what your top priorities are for the planning staff would be, would be very helpful. So with that, I think I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor, and we have NDS staff here and I'm happy to chime in if you need any clarifications or questions answered.
All right. Well, we will do the best we can as these questions are difficult. I think the priorities, the question in particular is a challenge for us. But we'll do what we can and maybe not be completely definitive tonight, but explore these topics. I want to present one topic that is, has been of concern to me for quite a long time. And it relates to the questions that the staff ask, though I don't know that, what I'm going to say is, would answer the questions that the staff asks. So for a long time, my sense has been that zoning itself and following the processes involved in rezoning almost always gives insufficient attention to the, to urban design or physical design at more at a scale larger than the individual building on a lot. And therefore tends to be insensitive to context, the physical context in which a proposed development or rezoning is located. One clear example that I believe is the, though this had nothing to do with rezoning as such, but it has to do with the multi-unit building at Washington in Van Buren that was so controversial, I don't know, five years ago. And how the claim was, I think rightly so, it was just pretty badly out of scale with the neighborhood in which it was going to be embedded. So how to deal with that kind of development becomes of considerable interest. And with regard to rezonings, then often one doesn't know what the buildings are going to be actually, so one might not know whether they're out of scale with the surrounding context or not. But I believe we need to have a better urban design or, well, I'll just use that term, better urban design capacity built into our zoning code. So, and I think some people in, on the council and Jeff as well, know that I distinguish between architecture, which pertains to individual buildings, urban planning, which involves sort of, you know, land uses and transportation at larger scales, and urban design, which is more about the ensemble of buildings. It's more about what's going on, how will a particular proposal affect the block? How will it affect the neighborhood? And how will, will it enhance the whole or not? I mean, those are urban design kinds of questions. So anyhow, I don't want to monopolize the situation here, but that's been a concern for me for quite a long time.
Well, Jim, sort of following up on that, I think one of the issues of, under this heading of urban design that I think has always been challenging is where transitions occur. So where you have an interface of a residential area with the commercial district, which in a sense is, I think, one of the aspects of the, you know, the Washington-Van Buren project is the, the failure of that building to gracefully make the transition between the College Hill neighborhood and the commercial area. So I think looking at this interface, which I think probably applies in a lot of instances, but that's one example, where having a better understanding of the impacts at these transitional zones, because it seems that's where often, you know, the design challenge occurs, is how do you, how do you make that smoothly rather than abruptly? In general, I think one of the issues that I keep struggling with is trying to understand, and it's sort of on the, this notion of threshold projects, what the impacts of the project, a project will be, which I would, I would agree with you in that sense as well, paying close attention to how a project will impact the surrounding context is a very important piece of this. And looking forward, as I was, you know, looking at that response by the city of Vancouver to its declaration of a climate crisis, how issues related to climate and heat island effect could fall under that category, that, you know, there are questions regarding solar access, for example, that I think could be added to the list of urban design issues that we need to be paying more attention to. So that the solar access rights of a property owner in the vicinity of a development project, their solar access rights are preserved through that, through the, as one considers the impacts of the project. We don't have, in my view, a very rigorous assessment process. You know, I've looked at some other cities' development application procedures. For example, San Francisco has a pretty rigorous sun shadow analysis for any building over four stories. They also have a very rigorous analysis triggered on, on the impacts on winds if a building's over eight stories. So in some respects, it sort of speaks to me of, you know, the, when we add to the complexity of a project, there, there needs to be a mindfulness of how the, the impacts of that project are going to be ratcheted up as a result of that intensity that will come with, with that development. So I'll stop there for a minute. I don't want to go any further at this point.
Yeah. How about the rest of you?
I'd be, I'll jump in here. I really want to key in on this concept of threshold. As far as I'm concerned, the more routine the project is, the less we need to be involved in terms of scale. If we have concerns about, or obviously we need to have the input, but if we have concerns about the urban design, we need to communicate those on the front end as opposed to the back end. I'll use one very specific demonstration in terms of what we do in Riverfront Crossings. I frankly like where we are at this point. If we have a taller building over a certain number of stories, the council has to weigh in on that. One project that was not a zoning issue was of course the Kinnick House, but I think that's another example of, we had discussions in terms of the permitting process. If you essentially double the size or there's some significant disruption in terms of what the ordinary flow is, we need to have those triggers in place. So whether it's council review or anything along those lines, and I think frankly, those sorts of thresholds, so in other words, these would be rare events that would not be occurring very frequently. I don't think that we should be involved in terms of the granular detail unless we get these larger, larger projects. One project that comes to mind, I know we've talked about a lot of the frustrations that we've all had, but I think the Forest View project is a good example. We all knew that this was a monumental project of an enormous amount of complexity. And so I think because we knew that, the developer reached out to individual counselors. They reached out to individual members of the community. I think certainly one of the things I think we could have done better on is the neighbor, the good neighbor policy, and I think we're doing better on that. But I think those, that, that process, I think, is actually working pretty well. So to the extent that we need to have feedback to staff, I would encourage us to think about this threshold in terms of, you know, if there's a height issue that needs to trigger a review process, I think that might be helpful. If we're talking about a building that's much larger, you know, in terms of square footage, we might want to think about that as something. But the other thing, and this maybe would be more informal, if there is a significant concern expressed by the developer, I guess I would, I don't know, at some point with our Augusta project, I don't know if that was pre, I don't know if we really had to rezone it, but the Augusta Place project, I believe we had a work session where the developer wasn't really sure whether we were going to move forward with it. And they just sort of showed us some general concept in a public setting. Certainly that's not something they have to do. I mean, they can utilize the rezoning process, go through staff, but to the extent that there is that uncertainty on the back end, I at least think we should have, to the extent the developer wants to, one, to gauge council sentiment, but two, to project it to the public so they're not surprised, because it's not only the council, the public needs to be able to weigh in. And, you know, they're part of this process too. And I know the developer sometimes can be very frustrated with the process, but of course citizens can too, and residents can be as well, when all of a sudden they're surprised. And so I think the more we can sunshine, the more we can daylight these at the very earliest process, I think, the better. And I think to a large degree, we have been doing that. At least that's been my observation. I think Jeff has been able to sort of anticipate much more effectively when he thinks there may be a very complicated issue either in terms of the public or in council. You know, he can reach out to us individually, we can have work sessions. So those are sort of my general observations, but I think specific triggering for review and work sessions could be something in those sort of rare circumstances. But otherwise, I think the extent that we want to have more design review, you know, again, I like where we're going with Riverfront Crossings and form-based code. We're trying to embed some of our form preferences on the front end so we are more predictable and so that, what's also more predictable for us too, and so we know what we're getting and we don't just all of a sudden find ourselves with, you know, like a Kinnick 2.0, because I'm assuming that would not be authorized in the form-based code. But that's all I have to say.
You know, Rockley, I, with what you've said, I'll just kind of follow up with that. I think we, I do think we need to look at threshold projects, because I think if we, if we can define what those thresholds are, and I don't think we can do it tonight, but I think if we can define what those thresholds are, then hopefully that gets us to the point then in also looking at existing code, what kind of text amendments we need there so that we can get away from what, what developers probably feel is micromanaging or whatever in terms of their design of buildings. And I'm thinking of multifamily buildings, okay? We've had a number of those that have either had difficulty making it through P&amp;Z or, you know, difficulty here or both, whatever. But if we could get to the point, if this is just a standard, multi-story building that doesn't meet any threshold requirements, it's not, you know, at a specific gateway area or it's not over some particular size or whatever those thresholds are, that it's really cut and dried for that developer, what the standards are for that kind of development. And that can be design, it can be the open space, we've had discussions about open space as well. But I think if we can define what those thresholds are and make the necessary adjustments to text so that we are comfortable, it frees up the developers, and I think that's what they're after. I think they feel like there is so much uncertainty now and so many conditional zoning agreements that are negotiated, that if we can say, okay, if you're not meeting any one of these thresholds, here's your design standards, here's your open space standards for your multifamily. And I know we have those now, but P&amp;Z is not accepting those as enough. And P&amp;Z is pushing them and getting conditional zoning agreements, which is again, as Jeff mentioned, also then in conflict with our effort for affordable housing. I mean, one of them that was done on the west side near Highway 218, that added $300,000 or $400,000 to the construction of that building because of conditional zoning agreements. So to me, we need to get more, we need to be more definitive in what those requirements are. So I think if we can identify thresholds where we think it needs more review, fine, but then if it doesn't meet one of those thresholds, we've got it really cut and dry and P&amp;Z is just going to let it, they're not going to be looking for all the elevations and all that sort of stuff. It's pretty, it's pretty cut and dried if they're going to meet those standards.
I think a key issue is whether or not a proposed development is out of scale with its context.
And that's where a threshold maybe is.
Yeah, yeah. So the analysis we went through with regard to the Lusk Avenue House, the one we did six months ago, they're about, presents a good model, it seems to me, because it's all about comparing the mass scale, I don't know, height, et cetera, square footage of that building relative to other new infill developments in comparable neighborhoods. And it really stood out. That was the thing that struck me, and I think it did you all as well. So if there would, if there's some way we could have thresholds, more than one threshold, because it's not just height, it's just square footage. If we could have more than one threshold that is about, that focuses on the difference between the, whatever building or buildings would be proposed as part of a rezoning relative to the context in which that building or buildings would go, I think that would go a long way.
And Jim, just a quick footnote to that, I think that also illustrates the perils of not having any discretion at all. Of course, again, that was not a rezoning, but you know, ultimately, we did not have the regulatory tools in that context. So we can't be too, you know, we can't over-correct here, I guess is what I'm getting at. That was something we didn't foresee and we just didn't have the regulatory tools to be able to do that.
I appreciate the conversation happening, especially with staff really coming and saying, hey, we need you to, you know, help us here and give us some direction. I think they did a great job of laying a lot of groundwork for us. One of the things that I would definitely like to mention is that we don't want to get, you know, too specific to allow, you know, creativity and that type of stuff, of course, that's where conditioning, you know, zoning come in and all that other stuff. But I do believe that if we can figure out in the beginning how to really get away from some of these bonuses that we, you know, that we have, if we can have it upfront, like this is what we want, this is the max square footage, the max, you know, height, because then that for developers just decrease a lot of problems, as well as for our citizens or residents within our community, that can be a part of that conversation upfront so that once the development starts to happen, everybody's on the same page. And so from my perspective, you know, when we're going through this process, if we can kind of keep that in mind, knowing what our limits will be and really setting that up. But there's also that part of, you know, creativity and allowing people to come and present to us, you know, some of their thoughts and ideas. And if we're too restrictive, then that could be a bad thing. But from my perspective, I think, you know, definitely, you know, the threshold projects, all that sounds good, but if we can even from the beginning, really try to figure out, what do we, what, what do our community want? And from the beginning, set up those square footage, height bonuses, all this other stuff from the beginning as much as we can.
Yeah, you mentioned height bonuses, so.
Well, getting away from height bonuses.
Well, here's what I want to, here's what I want to say. They appear in Riverfront Crossings for the form-based code, right? I mean, that's one key place, but not just there. There are other height bonuses that are permissible with regard to certain kinds of developments or rezonings. I'm not sure exactly which, I've never been clear about that, but they're, they exist. So if you mean we should get rid of height bonuses full stop, that's a big step. Maybe we should do it. I'm, I'm not advocating, but you know, maybe we should do it. What I do believe is a reasonable thing to do is look carefully at the height bonuses we currently offer in the Riverfront Crossings District. And my recollection is that Tony Perez drew attention to that for some of the sub-districts in Riverfront Crossings. He did not express any objection to two-story height bonuses for several of the sub-districts, but he, he did worry about much larger height bonuses in some sub-districts. So, yeah, so I just wanted to.
And a part of what he stated there was, you know, we have on the back end, you can get these height bonuses, and what he stated was, put it up front, that this is the max size of the building that you can have, and then hopefully people will build, you know, some will build up under that, but they would know that this is the max. And so I think that's my point is, you know, we start with the six stories and then you say you can get eight and then you can go up to whatever. What Tony said was start with the whatever, the max, and then, you know, go from there. But it's a major undertaking, change in thought process for the city, and I'm not suggesting that we need to do this, do this, do this, but I do know that we need to have the conversation and consider it.
What do the rest of you think about any aspect having to, anything having to do with this general topic of.
I haven't reviewed this very much, but I think, I don't know, for somehow I like case-by-case basis, so we can implement like our value. But this is, and also I understand that the staff need to have consistent, for the people who apply, you know, in terms of what is required at the application stadium, various application type, yeah, I understand that. But talking about the height bonus, for example, I think that's supposed to be as it is height bonus all the time, so we can have a room to implement our value for that building. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. We have a lot of things, standards for every building, that's fine, threshold, but I really still agree that to have height bonus, because this is like kind of room where the council can come and lay their value if we need affordable housing, if we need like certain thing from the developer to do, or if we need the building to look like the way that maybe blend with the rest of the area or, you know, just like room for us to lay in and talk about something. But with you, we need to do a threshold project, but also just, I don't think something can be just done like that. We need to do our homework and come back and talk about this, because we have to go to specific. to specific projects and see what we want to see, when, what we want to, like, really implement and make it part of the code, and come back. I agree with Susan when she said that. Thank you.
Susan also mentioned micromanaging, and I think, I'm recalling that there was on project, I think it was on the original on the South Gilbert, where P&amp;Z was nitpicking right down to what kind of playground equipment they were going to have, or should have in the green space, and I think that's going just a little bit too far. I don't think, as far as a standard, that's not one of the cut-and-dry standards that needs to be in there, but having the green space should be, and we should be more definitive about what we require for that, and not pass that off as something that they could do something else and not require the green space. And Rockney mentioned triggers, and I think, one, since we've been so involved in environmental discussions, that the environmental impact on the building, what it has on its, the surrounding area, that, that should be one of the triggers, that should be, be important, something we should keep in mind.
I'm wondering, in terms of a takeaway, Jim, is that if we do have an agreement that there should be these sort of thresholds, sort of quantitative thresholds, that then the marching orders of staff would be, you know, come back with their own expertise and maybe propose some thresholds to us that we could maybe have further discussion on. And they may just say, hey, certain parts of town, it's not going to make sense at all. Other parts, they may be able to come back with very specific recommendations as a starting point, much in the same way we did with, like, affordable housing at TIF, we said, hey, we'd like more affordable housing, and then Doug Boothroy comes back with a very specific proposal based upon their own expertise, so both as to height and square footage.
That sounds like a pretty reasonable idea to me, and I'd be curious to know how Jeff responds from a staff point of view. But I'm thinking of a few other things, I hope I can keep track of what I have in mind here. One is, in the Riverfront Crossings District, or any other area that has a Form-Based Code, I think we got to get to a position where the Form-Based Code determines, should determine the basics of the architectural design for any proposed building, and we shouldn't be nitpicking that. So I'm hopeful we'll get to that point. Another thing I think about is a small building, and here I'm thinking about, oh, what is it, out, out Muscatine Avenue, near First Avenue, where we are considering a rezoning for one, one specific building, and, and the commission wanted to look at renderings, I think, for that building. I think that such, such an instance like that does not rise to the level of requiring rigorous aesthetic or architectural analysis. So, that's where we need a clear set of criteria for establishing a threshold that does require more careful analysis. Yeah, and there's one other point that I wanted to make, but I knew I was going to forget it, so then maybe it'll come up to me in a second.
A couple of things I would add would be, and maybe I'm jumping a little bit into question two here, but, on the, on the questions of, related to open space requirements, it really became clear to me, in looking at how the open space was provided for the Forest View project, that the, the outcomes, with respect to the usable, you know, the usability of that open space that was provided, was, did not reach a threshold in terms of its usability. You know, they, they tended to be areas that were, the only way I can try to describe it would be, what was left after the building and the parking lot requirements had been established, and then you had this small piece of land, of a shape and location where, you know, as someone who designed public outdoors usable spaces, really didn't have much to build on because of its location and configuration. So it seems to me that some, some better criteria need to be developed, maybe it's more on the policies and procedures as to how one evaluates how that usable open space is developed, so that it's more integral to the project, rather than what's left after the parking and building requirements have been determined.
Yeah, I personally agree, and that's part of what I mean by urban design.
Yeah, it's kind of a, so there's that, and in terms of site development, in a similar way, I felt Forest View revealed to me, looking forward in terms of questions, particularly as it relates to stormwater runoff and heat island effect, that we needed to revisit our parking lot requirements, so that the, those lots have essentially better canopy cover, both for stormwater detention and reducing the heat island effect that's generated by these large paved areas. And I think, you know, in my short looking online, there are lots of best practices that I found in terms of cities that have minimum lot coverage when the trees are at maturity, for example, roughly in the 50% range. So I think there are ways, there's ways that will address that issue, and I would argue make for a better project. You know, I'd like to think these things are not onerous, but in terms of the use of the building, that, you know, when your vehicles are parked in that lot, they're, you know, they're going to be protected from these weather extremes through the day whenever they're parked there. So, I think there are opportunities to, to address and improve on the minimum open space and development standards as we move forward.
One other issue that may be a good idea is, right now, is my understanding, good neighbor is not required, is that correct?
Correct.
Have we thought about making that mandatory? And secondly, related to that, I know a lot of times residents will come in and say, I wasn't notified. Sometimes that means they were, just weren't paying attention, and staff did everything they could to sort of notify people. But sometimes that's a function of what the sort of the mandatory notification zone is. Correct me if I'm wrong, there's a certain square footage. So I think we also might want to think about expanding that in terms of notification, because I always sort of view, to some degree, when we have a group out in the audience, not always, but to some degree, if they're all mad at us, and they're all saying that they were surprised, I think we have to look at ourselves and say, hey, was there, it's a failure in some respects. And I think the more open we've been, the more, you know, wider the notification is, and then we don't get the pushback at the podium, I think that's successful. So I think the quieter, the better in the most cases, and I think the more we have an homage of that one project you did not support in the South District, you weren't necessarily against the project, you were concerned that the residents hadn't been notified or engaged enough, and I think they did have a good neighbor policy, but it wasn't, wasn't fully implemented. So I think that may be something else that we could tweak sort of structurally, and I think the more engagement there is, the less likely we're to have someone at the podium mad at us or mad at Jeff.
I think, listening to what people have said, it seems to me like we're in agreement, and I don't know if staff feels like they have anywhere near enough guidance from us at this point, but maybe for staff to come back with some ideas and more recommendations on what those thresholds might be. And then, I would kind of guess that just from some of the P&amp;Z stuff that's gone through over the last 12 months, you'd probably have some pretty good ideas of where some of that zoning text needs to be maybe cleaned up in terms of multifamily units and stuff, and design standards, and open space, that if they don't meet the threshold, folks, you're not getting a CZA out of the developer. I mean, they've, they've met the threshold, and they ought to be able to get through without jumping through a lot of extra hoops, regardless of who's sitting on P&amp;Z. I mean, and if they can't, then they should feel comfortable coming to the council, and we should approve it. I mean, that's the whole idea of this, is trying to make it easier for them to know exactly what those standards are, and if they've met those standards, then it should be kind of a slam dunk. Now, and what I'm saying, I see you kind of shaking your head down.
Not disagreeing.
But, but I agree, that we've also talked about some things in terms of, you know, the urban design and how it fits in with the context, and those kinds of things that may add more text changes than what we've really discussed before. So I don't...
I was sort of shaking my head, but not in disagreement with you. I think it would be good to have, for developers to have greater assurance that projects can move ahead, and if they meet the criteria, and that kind of thing. But I think they also, the projects also need to have some predictability for people who live in the general area. So that's where this good neighbor policy could come to bear. So I wonder if a, a good neighbor, we could require good neighbor meetings when, in those threshold kinds of situations.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's part of what I think. And I think also that a key part of what we need to be thinking about has to do with transitions. So, and when I use that word, I'm thinking about the, the development on South, on the South Gilbert Street, down by McCallister, the one you just referred to. There, the neighbors were objecting mainly because the transition was so abrupt between the existing single-family housing, and then just to the left of a, sort of a prairie ravine, sort of, there would be apartment buildings. So, and there's, some of us expressed a desire to see missing middle housing in that development, so that the transition could actually be accomplished deftly. So if we could not just identify threshold conditions, but also ways to enhance the transition between proposed projects and the existing context, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'd just quickly try to build on that, because I think, part of what I think we're trying to address is what the expectation of existing residents will be with a project. And I think, particularly with the plan development overlay process, you know, and particularly PDOs which are influenced by natural areas which can constrict the development area, that, once the project begins considering and applying building types that would not normally be allowed in the underlying zone, say if you have a RS5 or an RS8, and it becomes a PDO, you know, we've seen projects in various locations in the city where, with, even with the underlying zone being RS8, that buildings are proposed that are three stories and 200 feet long kind of expressions of building size, which I think, you know, to anyone living out there is shocking, because, you know, if they, you know, we get responses from people, residents who are familiar with zoning, they know what RS5, they know what RS8 is, and so I think they, they do have a reasonable expectation that the development that would occur around them would be consistent with that zoning. And so, and I don't, I don't mean to suggest that it's not possible to design with those buildings, larger buildings than would be allowed under the underlying zoning, but I think it does raise questions about expectations, and how, as, to use Jim's term, we deftly respond to the design challenge.
That's a legal term, incidentally, deftly.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
I'm kidding.
Jeff, I wonder if you or anybody in NDS staff, Ann, or Danielle, or Tracy, you know, would like to ask us questions, based on what you've heard us saying up here? Would it be helpful to have that kind of dialogue?
I'm comfortable, but I want to give Ann, Danielle, Tracy a chance to get any clarifications that you may need. It's probably going to be a process where we're back and forth a few times. You good?
Yes, I'm not comfortable.
We're just asking for magic, that's all.
Yeah. But I guess some of my takeaways, we can definitely develop thresholds. I think we're all in agreement that the multifamily, open space, I'm not hearing a whole lot of concerns on the commercial side of things. It tends to be multifamily, I hear in transition context, those are all things that we can work on. If there are commercial issues, or issues you've identified with commercial rezonings or buildings, let us know, because that's a whole nother subject.
Only at edges. I mean, I can imagine a situation where a commercial zone abuts a residential zone, and you got a transitional edge problem.
Correct, yeah. Okay.
I think, I'll just add one comment, I think, I think the transitions sometimes are difficult, and like John, because of expectations, but also, I think sometimes those expectations aren't reasonable, and that's where I think we have a challenge as a city and as we develop code. I mean, when I look at that one, that's the one closest, we've looked at two on South Gilbert, but the one closest to McCallister, where they were going to have single-family homes, and they were going to have townhouses, and then further to the north, I think there was going to be apartment buildings, if I'm right. And as I recall the time, the neighbors in there on Wagon Wheel and that area, they were not at all happy about that development, because they made comments about who was going to live there, I mean, low-income housing is what they were saying, and these houses were going to be worth a whole lot less than theirs, and they were concerned. And really, when you looked at that, it went from single-family to townhouses to apartment buildings. So, from my perspective, that was a very reasonable transition from a totally single-family neighborhood. So, I just raised that point, because what one person says is not a reasonable transition, and maybe specifically because they live in the neighborhood, is not what somebody with a more objective and more clinical or, you know, urban design perspective would say, would agree, would necessarily agree with them, that that's not a reasonable transition. So I think that's going to be, can be a challenge as we move forward.
We haven't addressed the third question at all. You want us to try to dive into it?
Well, I don't know if we're there quite yet. I think we probably need to get you some more information, and then let you decide.
That sounds good.
I'd like to ask maybe three questions that I have with regard to setting priorities. So, I think it's pretty difficult to answer that in the abstract, so then I find myself wondering, how long would it take to complete each of the actions, like identifying barriers to affordable housing, identifying amendments to the zoning code, and that would help meet climate action goals, and so on? How long would each of those take? Don't answer the question, I mean, it's just, I find it hard to answer the priorities question without having some sense of how long it's going to take to do the various things. And then likewise, what might interrupt or delay the staff's efforts? I can easily imagine some big project coming along, and suddenly Danielle or whoever has to spend a month or whatever working on that project instead of these other things. And then I'm wondering if there are any specific proposals, proposals in the, already in the works, that would justify immediate action on any of those possible priority areas. So, you don't have to answer any of those questions, but those come to my mind. Okay, well, we're off anyhow, initiating a discussion, that's a good thing, yeah. Shall we move on? Okay. So, the next topic would be clarification of agenda items.
Oh.
And I know there's at least one I want to bring up, having to do with deer management, which is item 17, the deer management plan that we are opposing to adopt. So, my question, you're kind of puzzled, Jeff, do I have, do I have the wrong number?
No, I'm just looking for it here.
Okay. So, my question is this, when I read the text of the deer management plan, I found myself wondering, will property owners need to provide permission to use their property for the bow hunting? I don't think the text is clear about that.
Yes.
Okay, so, it might be worthwhile looking again at the text when you get a chance. It's very clear at the start, but that seems to apply only to the sharpshooting, if I read it correctly, I'm not saying I really did, but...
I don't have it up in front of me yet.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't specify what properties will be used, or, it just says that we have to work in cooperation with the, with the DNR to establish those boundaries, and of course, we expect the council to have to sign off on whatever parameters we develop. So, that'll be something we'll have to work on this fall and winter, but, absolutely, we would want the property owner's permission and require that.
Yeah, I think you couldn't be there without...
And, and there may be people that want to allow hunting on their property, and we don't want to allow it on their property, so it's kind of works both ways, right? We have to define where we want it, and there has to be property owners within that area, assuming there's some private, we may target all public grounds, too. We haven't really gone through that analysis, and we probably need to... We haven't really gone through that analysis and we probably need to sit down with White Buffalo and have some of those conversations about the best places or kind of where the deer are located. And the DNR will have some, some advice for us too, but I would say those details are yet to come, but absolutely, we won't force hunting on a property owner.
Okay, any other questions about agenda items?
I had a question about 6E, and that's the tree and stump removal service contract. So the initial cost was 17,000. Is this related to the ash trees, the big difference in the, in the cost? Because it's a $113,000 difference.
Hi, Julie Seidel Johnson, Parks and Rec Director. Related to two things. First of all, over the last year, we've had a couple of big windstorms that have knocked down a lot of large trees that added costs we weren't expecting, but the largest bulk is due to Emerald Ashmore, yes.
And how much over 150,000 are you anticipating? Because from 17 to 131 is already significant.
Yeah, it is very significant. And I don't have a number, an exact number, but it will continue to rise. I mean, it'll be like a bell curve. We'll have a few more years where we have many, many more coming out because of that and then it will cut back again after that. So I don't have an exact number, though.
And just to clarify, we should have, we should have clarified this better in the report, but if you look at the resolution itself, it notes that the contract with total tree care of Iowa City was actually 95,000. So oftentimes what we'll do is, it'll be, it'll be a multi-year contract. We may only do, you know, 25 in a given year, but we'll do a larger contract with these companies through an RFP process. So the jump's not actually from 17 to 150. It's actually the, the award was from 95, which falls under my authority to spend. And as you get to 150, that's when your authority to spend is required. So it's one of those awkward situations in which we didn't think the spending threshold was going to reach your level, but due to what Julie just mentioned, the contract had to grow to where it required. So we're mid-contract and we need, we need your approval to move that number up.
Thank you. Any other agenda items?
I wanted to ask about, on the Correspondence 8G, the updates on Black Hawk Mini Park. There was shade structures that were illustrated. And I'm not sure if anyone else on council was aware of that, but I wasn't aware of it. I was just wanted to better understand the story behind that.
So it started with the, with the Washington Streetscape Project. In order to help continue to drive people downtown during that disruptive process or different, disruptive project, we contracted with the Downtown District on placemaking activities downtown. And I'm not recalling exactly what they used those funds for the first year. And then as we got into the Ped Mall project, we decided to continue it because we found that it was successful. Matter of fact, I think the first year they did more events. They had a rock climbing wall, they did paddle boarding, they did things of that nature to get people downtown. Last year, they transitioned to the Prairie House. Remember the Prairie House structure that was built downtown? And they might have also done a few smaller events. This year, what Betsy's memo is detailing is what their efforts are looking at this year. And this year, they wanted to focus more on the seating, which is the picnic tables that you see down there now that are painted the bright colors. They've introduced some planter boxes and are, and are maintaining those planter boxes to try to create a sense, a different sense of place down there. And then the shade structure is one more component to that. Obviously, that's one thing that that area is lacking at times is shade. And instead of doing a traditional umbrella, they wanted to do something a little bit more artistic. So I think they worked with the local architecture firm and developed...
So does that replace, I remember there was a structure proposed for the Black Hawk?
This is a temporary installation, so it could come back, but it's not meant to be a permanent installation, much like the Prairie House or those picnic tables.
So there, what is the status of that shade structure that...
We did not, that was an alternate on the bid and we did not accept that. So there are no plans to bring that back. It's not in the CIP right now. The, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but the foundations are installed. So if we want to go back in and do it, the foundations are there to put that shade structure on, but we do not have the funding and the budget to do that.
Okay.
That's like, John, I was confused on that too because I thought that the footings were already in place. And then to see these more leaf-like sort of umbrella rather than the box structure like the Prairie House, I was confused by that.
These won't require footings. These aren't of a size and scale to require any disruption underground. Again, they're working off of a $25,000 budget, so that's where we get the picnic tables.
I think it's a good experiment because clearly the lack of shade is a good thing.
I'm pleased with the direction. I just was confused.
Just confused, yeah.
How it related to the, what I understood to be the direction there.
Okay, any other agenda items?
I'll see, I had a couple of questions. First was on item 14 for the bikes, e-bikes, e-scooters and e-skateboards ordinance amendments. I guess, how does this ordinance relate to the University of Iowa campus moratorium on e-scooters as well as what provisions exist in the code for these vendors such as like Lime or Uber?
June. Derry Nagel-Gam Transportation Services. And to your first question, this will legally enable e-scooters to operate within the city of Iowa City. It's, the university's moratorium, I guess, doesn't necessarily have a bearing on whether we are able to legally enable them, but this will legally enable them to operate on the city public right-of-way. And could you repeat your second part of your question?
I guess what provisions it has for like regulating vendors. I guess I'm thinking the practice where like sometimes they'll just come in the middle of the night and like dump a bunch of scooters on the ground and just leave.
This specific ordinance doesn't address that. It's more about the operation of the vehicles and whether they're legally enabled and on our roadways. So this doesn't address that specifically. But to your point, we are in the final stages of negotiating a contract with, with an e-bike vendor for the city of Iowa City and which we hope to have out on the streets this fall. So we're probably within days of having a contract signed. And that will be e-bikes, which have been enabled by this ordinance and a previous ordinance that came before you a few months back. We've expanded the ordinance in the version you see in front of you to, to include all classes of e-bikes. There's three manufacturer classes and we want to make sure they're all included.
All right, thank you.
I could clarify real quick on the campus. What the university does with their, on their campus is their decision. So this has no bearing on the walkways through the Pennacrest or other areas on campus. They govern those.
And then the second one was for item 18 on the Transt study consultant agreement. Does the agreement set specific dates for the beginning and conclusion of the study or is that still TBD?
We will negotiate a start date as soon as we have a signed contract with, with the vendor, with the consultant team. We expect that the project will kick off within the next few weeks and then it will begin in earnest. The actual study will begin upon the start of the university session and the school district session. So it's going to take the better part of the next year to complete. But yeah, we're looking forward to getting started and getting those dates down. But those are probably the closest general estimates I can give you right now.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Any other agenda items? Okay, should we turn to the information packets, July 18? And as you're looking, I note that we have five items that the staff would ideally like to get council decisions about, and they are all on the August 1 information packet.
All right.
Okay, so the July 25th packet, anything there?
I had a comment on one of these. Oh, I think on the July 25th packet. So the, the letter that came in from the residents who live next to the area that Mityam just got a special exception for, and there's a letter from Sue in the packet, we had miscalculated on that reconsideration issue. So essentially, we are taking their request as a request for reconsideration and we are setting up a meeting with the Board of Adjustment to see if they want to make a motion to reconsider. So I just wanted to let you know that.
And it's completely out of our hands because it's the Board of Adjustment, right?
It is, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Shall we turn to the August 1 packet? Okay, so why don't we just start with the first IP number four? The memo from the city manager concerning blackbird investments and the Forest View Tenants Association's request for financial incentives regarding the new housing that will be built out there?
I was trying to request that to defer this item to next time, if you can.
Could you just explain why?
I just think we, we need to do more investigation and talk to more people about this. And some people, they have a lot of questions and we need to collect some informations before we can, and some people, they want to come and present here about this and maybe they can do it during a public comment. And after that, maybe we can have a decision about this.
Is that a motion? Well, let's see.
I haven't put a motion yet, but I'm just asking.
There's not going to be a motion as such, yeah, okay.
I would agree with Mazza here because it seemed like we didn't have a lot of information as far as where this request was coming from. I'm all along from day one, been very supportive of this Forest View project, but this raised some other concerns as far as the request for public ownership of the green space and then larger homes and 1.2 million dollars, that's a lot. And how many of those homes need to be larger? Do they all need to be larger? So it seems like there's a lot more questions than answers. So I'd appreciate more and input from the actual residents, the potential residents.
That's the way it seemed to me as well. So...
No, no time crunch on my end.
Without objection, then we'll defer discussion about this to, I guess, our next meeting on the 20th.
We'll just put it in the following packet.
Yeah.
Yes, please. Thank you.
All right, the next one has to do with IP number five, a memo from NDS, Neighborhood Development Services, from Tracy Heichu, the director, concerning the strategic plan item, review of the Affordable Housing Action Plan and New Strategies. Tracy, do you want to guide us through this?
Hi, Tracy Heichu with Neighborhood Development Services. So there's a memo on your July 29th, well dated July 29th. The memo was to update you on our Affordable Housing action steps, those 15 action steps for affordable housing, where we were at with those. So the memo starts off just giving an update on those steps. Basically, we're done with 13 out of the 15. We're working on the last two. One was the Tax Exemption Committee. That goes to HCDC for review. I think you've seen the recommendation. HCDC's going to comment. It'll come back to you probably late August, early September. And then the other item is reviewing code changes to, to encourage affordable housing or to, to make the cost lower. After the memo, there's discussion about with these action steps, certain time has to go by so we can evaluate. One of them is like the Form-based Code. We won't approve Form-based Code until 2020. Others were to enable certain things to happen like through TIF to build affordable housing. Those will take, could take multiple years for us to find out what's effective viable tool and what produces the most affordable housing for the targeted groups that you want to see. So just, just remember that this is a long-range plan. You're not going to see always immediate results just because affordable housing, I mean, by the time you assemble the parcels, find your financing, apply for programs, build it, lease it, it just takes some time. In the memo, I also talked about the importance of the private sector, that we subsidize less than 10% of the private market. So supply issues are important. So 90% of our rental market is unsubsidized. So working with the private sector to increase supply will assist with our affordable housing goals. Then the rest of the memo talks about a recommended programming change. This memo was meant to talk with the funds that we're allocated for fiscal year 20, what should be the focus and what we would recommend after, since we've had this action plan since 2016, based on the results and what we've seen, what would we change? And so we looked at the Affordable Housing Fund. We are recommending that, right now, we give 50% to the Housing Trust Fund to allocate. We're increasing, oh, we recommend increasing that by another 200,000 right now. The Housing Development Commission reviews LIHTC projects, low-income housing tax credit projects. We're basically hoping to combine that into one body that reviews. They're, they're usually large projects, they're very complex. The Housing Trust Fund Board has a lot of expertise. They review complex projects. It also simplifies when a project needs more money or needs to be reviewed again. One body is reviewing that. We've already combined our review, our allocation process was the Housing Trust Fund. This would just simplify. So we would allocate 700,000 to the Housing Trust Fund with the caveat that if the IFA or the Iowa Finance Authority changes their allocation plan, where they give more points or you score better by getting a direct city contribution, we would take that 20, that 200,000 back and we, we directly allocate that. Another, another one was, we dedicate 75,000 to a dedicated opportunity fund. This means, this includes our, let's look and see where our land banking funds are. We'd reallocate the land banking funds. We'd probably still give money to land banking, but we'd be more flexible how we use that money. So 7.5% would go to that opportunity fund. That would be if we have collaborations that we don't know about, if they come up, we would use those funds. We have approximately 800,000 in the fund right now. We're acquiring a property. It's on your agenda later tonight. After we allocate those funds, we have about 600,000 remaining. So we'd still have those funds in this, in that pool. This would just be added to it. We'd also have 7.5% to the city's Healthy Homes Program. We give 50,000, we apply through the Housing Trust Fund. Right now, we would, we want to stress improving our existing housing stocks to make it healthier. And so instead of applying every year to get it, we would just, we would just internally allocate it. And that gives a, that way, the money that we give to the Housing Trust Fund is unencumbered. They don't have to, they don't have to look through the city applying for their own funds that we give them, if that makes sense. We'd also, we use those funds if we don't use them in direct Healthy Homes applications. If we're doing CDBG Home GRIP and one of the owners has any type of impairment such as COPD, asthma, we could invest those funds there too to increase the amount of funds we're doing to improve the indoor air quality of that unit. We've dedicated 10% to security deposits that, well, sorry, 30,000 would capitalize a landlord risk mitigation fund that, there's a nonprofit agency in Iowa City working on that right now to make it easier to, to give some assurances to landlords who rent to people that might have some difficult, difficult things in their past that make it like criminal history, low credit score, different things that might make it harder to rent to that person. So it gives some security to that landlord about either lost rent or damages. And then 70,000 dedicated to a security deposit. For years, we've heard how difficult it is to get into housing. This would provide a security deposit. We'd take an RFP out to the local nonprofits. They would apply. We'd provide funds to them to run programs. There's a couple nonprofits that I know already have this program. We'd see if we could expand that use in Iowa City to get people into housing. Another large change, well, not a large change, none of these are huge changes. It's what we're doing now. We're just focusing on existing housing stock and making that housing stock healthier, basically. Also, we look at our CDBG Home, how we're spending those funds. What we want to do is to encourage applicants that are either getting a grant or low-interest loan, how they could rent to people lower than that fair market rent. Because, to be honest, there's parts of town where the fair market rent is higher than market rate. And so we want to subsidize housing and that you keep a lower rent. So we're increasing the availability of affordable housing to people at lower ends of the income spectrum. One is just administrative change regarding our equity that's required in our rehab program for emergencies. So if you run out of heat in the winter, your water heater breaks, right now, we look at the equity to make sure that our loan's covered. And if you don't have it, we... have it, we can't help you. So, we would waive the equity requirement, we'd still put a mortgage on the property and recover what we could in case of default, but that way, we can assist people when they're having crisis and have healthier housing. We're also putting a focus on unless subsidizing new construction is expensive, subsidizing new construction targeting people below 40, 30% of median income is very high. So, unless we have other community resources such as a LIHTC, you know, Low-Income Housing Tax Credit, or state funds, we're going to concentrate on rehab and acquisition. So, moving away from new construction unless we have another source of funding helping us from the state, from the federal government, that's one of the changes. And I believe the last change is, right now, the Housing Trust Fund, we allocate money to them annually. What we would do is, and it, they have to go through the aid agency process, which is competitive process, they're never quite sure what they're going to get funded each year. With that funds, we'd take a 5%, we would just, out of the funds that we're allocating them, it would just be 5% for administration, and we would just enter agreement, so they would know each year that they're going to get administrative fee, and they're coming out of that aid agency money, or that pot of funds. So, those were the major changes, and I'm here for any questions.
The only question I have is, you had talked about a change, moving decision-making authority away from HCDC to the Housing Trust Fund for like a level of review, could you elaborate a little bit more on that?
That's only for LIHTC applications. The only thing that we would be changing, HCDC would still be reviewing all the CDBG and Home projects, it's just before that portion that we give to the Housing Trust Fund, or, right now, we keep 20% of the Affordable Housing Fund, and we dedicate it to a LIHTC project, it only can be used for a LIHTC project. So, we would just send that directly to the Housing Trust Fund, and then they, their board would make those recommendations, and they would allocate money out. Because, to be honest, we're funding the same project, so, when the Housing Trust Fund funds a LIHTC project, we're also typically funding it with CDBG Home Funds too, so, just simplifying the process and having it under one body.
So, from, if you think about Delray, and you think about the, the project that's under construction on Sand Road, or from Sand Developers on Herbert Hoover, Rochester Extended, those developers went to the Housing Trust Fund and got money, and then they came and they went through the, the city CDBG process, through HCDC, and then through council to get funding as well, so it's, and, and if you think about the, the funds that the Trust Fund's using to, to award to those, they're just using the money that we're giving them to award. So, the developers, a sense, in a sense, applying for city funds through two different avenues, and it just didn't make a whole lot of sense to us. And, and what we found is that the review criteria, the, the Trust Fund, and Simon's on the, the Trust Fund Board, so he probably wants to comment on that, but, you know, the, the Trust Fund, and then through the C, City Staff, and, and CD, and, I'm sorry, HCDC and council, we're not necessarily comparing notes with the Trust Funds on those awards too. So, we think it makes sense that one body is looking at the complete financial picture and making that award. We recommend that be the, the Trust Fund, because they do the lion's share of that, that work regionally, but if it's not them, I, I think we need to figure out a better process than what we have right now.
Has HC, HCDC weighed in on this?
No, the, the memo came out on Thursday, and came directly to council.
And currently, through the state IFA process for how they score projects, you get points for a Housing Trust Fund allocating dollars, but you don't for the city. So, for instance, we had a project that wasn't approved initially, that would have been, had those dollars gone through the Trust Fund and not come directly from the city, so it makes it more likely that those projects will move forward.
You mean that 20% that we've been allocated to the LIHTC project, now we give it to the House Trust Fund, which is going to be equal to 200, right?
It's the same amount of money, whether we provide it or...
Yeah, but instead of we process it, we give it to them, and they give it to them, and they don't apply to us.
Yes.
But, when they come here and ask for that money, we as a council, we ask them for something to do. Like, we implement our value at that time, you know? Each time they came and asked for that, we request something else. But I'm not sure if the House Trust Fund, they're going to do the same thing, because they have like set of requirement, and it will be applied to everyone.
The LIHTC projects generally meet the requirements by the state, we haven't put additional with the city dollars requirements on those. We try and make sure that they maximize the points to make sure that they get approved for funding through the state, and those point scoring systems are very defined by IFA. So, when you see the 30% AMI, 60, all those numbers, those are to maximize the likelihood that the project gets approved from IFA. We had a project that didn't get built because the dollars came from the city and not from the Trust Fund, and so they didn't get points for it.
But I remember one of them, where the project was here, and we even give them more money, and we ask them to do more thing. Am I right, or am I...
We, we considered it with the Herbert Hoover, it was a recommendation from HCDC that we put additional money into that Sand project to further lower the rents. And, and another example of us going above and beyond the LIHTC money would be the Delray Sewer Enhancement that we gave them, if you remember, they had some infrastructure costs that weren't anticipated with a, with a sewer relocation, and we gave them an additional 150. So, there's still an opportunity with, with the Opportunity Fund that Tracy described to, to supplement those LIHTC projects, or any other projects that come up. We wanted to give council that flexibility, but again, we think those dollars are, are better placed in the, at the Trust Fund level.
That makes sense to me, I mean, particularly with Simon's explanation, that if they're getting more points, if those dollars are coming through the Housing Trust Fund than if they're city dollars, then there's a better chance of getting the LIHTC, LIHTC project approved by the state. And as Tracy said, there's language in here that if there was a reason to pull that money back and allocate it directly through the city for more points, we can always do that. And I can't find it at the moment, but my sense was, from what I read in here, that we've also got people on the Housing Trust Fund Board that have been there a while and, are really into this and have maybe more experience, and Simon's nodding his head in terms of, these can be some very complex projects in terms of the financing that we're getting through, through the state, and the way the developer is doing their financing, and so to have a group of people that really understand that complexity and do it just through one process makes a lot of sense to me. So, I would agree with the recommendation.
Does the $200,000, because I know that the $500,000 that we give the Trust Fund kind of is matched somewhere else, does that also get matched as well?
The 200, well, when you look at a LIHTC, yes, it brings in a lot of funds, so the $200,000 is the same amount of money, it's just now over who, who recommends funding. LIHTC applications are so competitive, developers are going to do whatever they can to maximize their score. So, if we wanted to, like Sand did come back to us and asked, you know, HCDC asked for, if we provided extra money, would you do this or this? Council didn't approve that, so it's still the same LIHTC project that you approved before. We could use those Opportunity Funds if we want to do something above and beyond, and that would come back to HCDC and council.
I do want to make a comment about the plan, the strategic plan in general. I'm excited, I think there's a lot of good opportunity that we see here that's being suggested. You know, the private sector that you talked about, I think, was it 10% now? I think subsidizing, trying to figure out a way, especially since we have so much, we're, we're seeing vacancy throughout our community, now would be the very opportune time to try to figure out how to engage that private sector and to create a more affordable housing, and so, I really do believe that this is an opportunity that we should be focusing on. And, you know, you talk about the $70,000 security deposits, in the world of disabilities, that is a huge concern for a lot of people, and I think just in general for individuals that have limited, you know, living paycheck to paycheck, to come down with a, even if your security deposit is 400 and your first month rent, $800 can be very hard, especially if you are on fixed income from social security or something like that. And, you know, the $30,000 for landlord risk mitigation, I mean, there are so many people that I know, you know, they're traveling from community to community because, you know, something happened, and, and they can't get rental, you know, a rental agreement. So, there are some great things happening here that I do feel will increase, one, our housing stock through the private sector, as well as just opportunities for more individuals within our community that could use affordable housing, and this is making pathways for those that have had traditionally a hard time. One question I do have, and I'm sorry to keep going, is overall, just the, do we have better data on, for example, how many affordable housing units do we really need? I didn't see any of that in your, in what you presented.
No, we had Affordable Housing Market Analysis that Mullen and Lonergan did back in 2007, we updated it in 2015. That does talk about gaps in affordable housing, what we need in the community, so we do have that data. I didn't put it in here, but this plan addresses, it's meant to address those gaps.
Do we even have it down to how many apartments we need? For example, there's, there is a need for four-bedroom apartments, or, you know, affordable housing rental units?
I know what you're saying, um, no, the study basically reported in units, whether that met in single-family, detached, multifamily, townhomes, it doesn't go to that specificity, specificity, I always say specifics, but it does talk about units. Now, there, we are talking about, whenever we go through city steps input, there's always that concern that we need four-bedroom multifamily, and right now, our code doesn't allow new construction of four-bedrooms multifamily units, so we're going to look at that when we look at the zoning code changes, because we know larger families need that, and it's more expensive to live in a single-family detached, so you're going to pay a lot more in rent than you would in an apartment unit with four, four bedrooms. So, we will be looking at that with the zoning code changes.
Awesome, and the private sector, opportunity?
Yep.
I still have question for the, going back to the LIHTC and 200. Is this, there is in the language, something saying that the 200 have to be used only for LIHTC by Fund Trust Fund?
Yeah, it can only be used for LIHTCs.
And if they don't use it...
Huh?
If we, if they don't use it for, if there is no project for LIHTC on that year...
Then it sits there.
They still say they have, yes, to keep using it for that.
It can only be used for LIHTC, so that happened to us the first year, because you don't always get a LIHTC project, they're that competitive, we don't always, we were lucky, last year, we got two.
Yes.
I've been here for almost 20 years, and that's the only time I remember that happening. There's years that we won't get any application, we will apply and nothing. So, if it doesn't happen, then that money goes to the next year, so that's what happened with Delray, they got two years' worth of our LIHTC.
But can we build our money if we have something else to do with it, if there is no LIHTC project?
It would go back to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so every year, the council, it requires a resolution to, to fund the Trust Fund, we'll bring a resolution to you, and at that time, if we ever notice, and we do have a seat on the board with, with Simon currently filling that, if we ever notice that, you know, for instance, the LIHTC pot of money has grown to, you know, a million dollars or something, we might suggest not giving them a year's worth of that, those LIHTC dollars and repurposing them for another affordable housing purpose.
So, I'd like to draw attention to the last two sentences of the concluding paragraph in your memo, and express my support for the objective. So, the two sentences I'm referring to, read. "This memo outlines a few changes that we feel will help focus the city's efforts on more cost-effective strategies that will benefit those on the lower end of the income spectrum. This will necessarily require a shift in focus away from new construction and toward the community's existing housing stock." I think it's a smart move to make.
I, I agree, and I really like this, these proposed changes, because I think they appear to be very well thought out, and especially, like, if you do A, how's that going to affect B and C, it just all seemed to flow very well.
But just, at least for me, I think it all looks great. I also like the repair piece of it, we've talked about that a lot, you get a new place, and all of a sudden, you have a huge bill, what do you do, and, and what restrictions do we have, that's a great job. But at least, before we do change the review process with HCDC, I would either like, I would like to just get at least HCDC's input, and they may have the same opinion on that, but at least that's still, I'm not supportive of that until I hear more, so I don't know how everyone else feels on that, but at least for that piece of it, even though staff's reasons seem very sound, I would at least like more information before I would support that particular change, but everything else looks very, very good.
I wouldn't want our decision to be based on what HCDC thinks.
No, I don't either.
Is that what you mean?
No, but I, but I would like their, I would like input, because we're, as, as I understand it, we are changing a level of review that currently does reside with them, unless I'm mistaken. So, they may say, you know what, you're right, we don't want any of that, and we may disagree with them, but I would at least like that input before I'm going to support a change to decision-making authority that currently resides within them. That's just my opinion, maybe no one else agrees.
This might address it, but when HCDC, when we go through each year and we, we review the projects and the applications, which come out in December, so it'll be in October, HCDC will have a new ranking criteria, so at that point, they can bring that ranking criteria to you to review. So, that would be their recommendation coming back to you about how they're going to score projects. So, each of our projects, public facilities, housing, we have that criteria that HCDC comes up with, so that hasn't been done for fiscal year 21 projects yet, so they will be doing that, and the suggestion, they can consider it, they can make recommendations back to you, because we get the application materials approved anyway, well, through HCDC, we can just have, we can put that, at that time, they have the recommendation, it can go through you, you can look at it as well. If that makes sense.
So, I don't know, does that satisfy your objection, Rockney?
I mean, again, I would still like the feedback, that's, that's my opinion, you guys may disagree.
So, can we, can we agree to support all that's been recommended so far, we'd like to get some feedback from HCDC about this particular component of it, just to get feedback, which does not necessarily mean that we would agree with HCDC or not, I mean, we would just get...
We may get their feedback and disagree with their feedback.
I guess we'd like to add a sentence on number two, for the scoring, like A, the sentence that ending with lower than the HUD maximum limit.
Where are you at?
Number two, right? There is another two?
Under CDBG?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Page...
Before the, the, before this, right before the...
Okay, yep.
It's number page six.
Yes, okay.
Okay, like, HUD maximum limit, can we just add like, in addition, increasing available scoring for rent and housing costs that are no greater than the cost burden threshold for household with below poverty income?
I don't know if I, can you repeat that?
I don't understand.
I also don't understand either. Beatty?
You know, because, I'm talking about the scoring here.
Are you, item two, CDBG and Home, paragraph A, is that where you are?
Paragraph A.
Okay, so which sentence are you looking at?
After the first sentence. I just want to say in additional increase available scoring for rent and housing costs that are no greater than the cost burden threshold for household with below poverty incomes.
I can't agree...
If I can define that.
I can't agree or disagree, because I don't know what it means.
For the people that like, below the poverty income, I mean, like, yes...
I'm sorry, for me, throwing a sentence in the middle of that paragraph right now, I can't comprehend what the actual impact of that is, so I can't agree or disagree.
Yeah, I guess...
Talking about the, you know, because they said here lower than the HUD maximum limit.
Maz, Maz, here...
They want to add more.
Here's my own personal thought about this. What I know about housing policies and programs is that they can become very complex, I don't want to be a person making detailed judgments about really detailed specifics of, of those kinds of things. So, I trust Tracy, I trust NDS staff, I think they're trying to figure out a way to use the limited money we have in the best way possible, and I'm willing to go with what Tracy's recommending, you know, and rather than you or me trying to invent some language on the spur of the moment.
Yeah, but they recommend something, and we, we will talk to them and implement what we need. If you don't agree with me, that's something else.
Staff doesn't have any issues taking 2A to Housing Community Development Commission, because we technically would have been way for the ranking criteria. So, taking 2A through HCDC and getting the recommendation is not an issue, because we would have been, we would have been doing it anyway, if that makes sense.
Okay, so item 2A can go to HCDC also for advice from them, right?
Yeah, because, yeah, our allocation, like I said, applications don't even come out till December, so it's not an issue.
And I know that's not Tracy, that's, I says HCD, that's why, you know, I'm doing it, and, and that doesn't mean some not trusting my, our staff, by the way, we trust our staff, but the staff will bring recommendation, and we are here not to just rubber stamp the staff recommendation, we're here to talk to you back... rubber-stamp the staff recommendation, we're here to talk to you back and forth. Sometime I might be wrong and you correct me. Maybe I go, like, outside the limit of the law and maybe owner can correct me. That's what it is.
I get the point. So we have two things we want to send to HCDC for some feedback? Is that correct?
I think it was 2A was the, what we needed HCDC feedback on.
And the Lytec.
And the Lytec.
Yes, the Lytec.
The Lytec, we have to, well, depends on, I can issue a check to the housing trust fund for 500,000 now?
Yeah, that's what we would do. So we'll do, we'll do the 500,000 and then we'll wait for HCD, for you to consider HCDC's recommendation. If you still decide to send the 200, we'll just cut a separate check for that at a later date.
Okay. Does that sound reasonable?
That's fair.
For the administrative fee, so you're okay with us removing them from the eight-agency process and entering, and doing that 5% administrative fee?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right. Let's all head.
Okay. Latasha, you're up, but we have like eight or at the most like 12 minutes.
Let's give her a shot.
Give it a shot, Latasha.
Sorry, we didn't get to you a little bit earlier, but it's great to see you and this, you know, coming here to speak to us as the senior center director and all that, so.
This is starting to feel real familiar, having like five minutes. That's okay. All right, so I have a memo about the kitchen that you all requested. It took a little bit of time to get all the pieces together, because as you all know, the kitchen has not been operating at the level it has been for multiple years. So as you see before you, there's some equipment that we are working to acquire to just go ahead and absorb and keep in our kitchen until we're able to make some changes. Are there any specific questions? Maybe I'll do that for time purposes. Or would you like me to just walk through the memo?
Well, I think we just frame, let's frame the question to them. We've got a quick fix solution and we have a longer-term vision, because there's a lot of building needs at the center. So that's kind of the question that we're framing to you. Do you want a quick fix? And let's try to get this up and running? Or do you want to wait for this pending building study that Latasha's getting ready to dive into, so that we have a bigger picture of the needs of the building and we can prioritize the various projects?
I just want to ask you about the quick fixing. Is that going to make the kitchen licensed, like every...
Potentially. There are some public health things, there are some policy changes. So when we say quick fix, we mean that in quick, but not exactly quick. So we have a couple of permit...
Relative terms.
Yes, yes. We have some changes. We would have to make sure that we have been certified that it can be used in a commercial. There are some pieces that we have to do. There's some changes, there's some equipment that hasn't been used. Our stove, I don't even know if it works. So some of those things have to be replaced. We just have to really kind of look into it. We have to make sure we don't have any pest issues, which happens in our building. So, you know, there's a couple of pieces there. When we say quick fix, there are some major things that we have to address, which would be the refrigeration and freezer, the stove needs to be completely replaced. The other thing that can be costly is the hooding, making sure that, you know, we don't have any fires, and that hasn't been used in years. So we haven't even had a chance really to have someone really get in there, because it would cost additional, it was just costing more and more assessment fees to get this looked at. So we have some money in a year to be able to really dig into this, to make sure that we're getting it right. But we could get some basic things done where people could potentially use it after we go through a process of making sure that it's safe and good for consumption.
Latasha, do I understand correctly that the building assessment study would be completed by spring of next year?
That's our hope, is that we have someone come in who will be able to look at the entire building, but specifically, they would be able to look at the kitchen and to make sure that it can be used for public. Because for the last 35 years, it's only been used by an organization to prepare meals for outside, it's never been used. The senior center staff has actually never been the people who have been the folks running that kitchen. So it's new for us, so we have some work we'll have to do on our end to make that happen.
I do think the 40,000 to 60,000 may not be accurate. I did a tour of that kitchen. I think it might be, from my perspective-wise, since we, you know, have the potential of just getting a whole collaborative look at the center, to do that first and then make a decision from there.
Yes, I think, I think it would just be helpful, because there may be some things that we need to change. For instance, in the room next to it, that we might need to get some assessment about that before we do any major things in there. I just think, I don't want us to be in a situation where we fix some things and then later we have to come back and we have to redo some things and then it costs us more money. That was my biggest concern. It's like, we can, we can do this and change some things up, but then, you know, what other repairs are we not... One thing I know about the senior center is when you open the wall, things are different. So it's an older building, so, you know, it can look like this on the front, but then as we get into it, it can have some more cost.
Well, I'd really like to see the kitchen used, but access to defer for several months.
I think the kitchen renovation will actually hit on a lot of your strategic goals, once we get into where it is.
I think we'd have a better idea of the cost too, than a better estimate, and then we can hopefully budget to help out with funding of that or find sources to help with that. Because it could be a lot more.
I guess it makes sense, but, you know, really, these kitchens, people have been waiting for it, since they are like remodeling the rec center, at that time, this come up, so they can have kitchen there. And the city manager said, no, this is, they can use the kitchen of the, you know, the senior center. And now this is like taking years without any action, until the people start coming here and talk about it, and still we want to defer it. To me, it's really concern that we are not doing this quick, even though I understand that, you know, everything that you said is logic and we don't need to do the job twice. But I hope this will be like rest in next spring, really. This is taking long.
Well, I think, once we get a better look at what we need to do, we'll be able to come back with some different numbers. Regardless, it's going to take time.
And we are not talking about, like, fixing, just assessment with the building needs, right?
Yes, yes.
And going to take all this long?
It's going to, it's going to take a while for the assessment to be done, because it's a full building assessment. So we have to look at the entire building to make sure that we're compliant in all the areas, and that's just something that hasn't been done over there for a while. But the kitchen is included in that, so that we can kind of figure out what we need to do. Now, we're offering the quick fix, that we could potentially get the freezers and refrigerators going and get some folks in there and try to make that happen, but I just, I'm just not sure. I mean, regardless, it's going to take some time, because like I said, the senior center staff has never been the folks who run that kitchen. So in some realities, we almost need another staff person to operate the kitchen, because it's always been operated by the director from elder services for the last 30-plus years. So our staff is not even currently equipped to run that kitchen in a way that was being proposed to be used for community consumption. So that's, that's some of the, some of the delay as well, is will we have to come back and request for another position or halftime position to specifically make sure that that is being able to use to the level that we want it to be able to be used for revenue purposes, but also for the community to be able to use it appropriately and safely.
Fair enough, yeah.
Okay, so I think we're in general agreement here.
For what it's worth, I would like to explore the basic option, realizing that if it turns impractical, we could defer, but that would be my, my choice. But it looks like the noses aren't lining up with my view, so.
What's one?
The basic. I do support the evaluation of the basic as opposed to deferring for the more long-term. But that doesn't seem to have the support.
Yeah, I think the amount of time involved in deferring to spring is not very much.
It just, it just is something that it really does take...
They end up in the same amount of time anyway.
At the same time, we have this huge plaster project going on, and so we just have to, we'll get it done. It'll get done.
Yeah, but, you know, when they start, they have to give it the priority, they start with the kitchen.
To your point, I think that was a really good point of, I was concerned that all of a sudden you'd have all these outside users that would come in, and then, you know, how would that affect the other senior center users? So it's a balance.
Yeah, it is, I mean, the reason why I'm bringing up the plaster piece is because the plaster is right near the kitchen, and so we have to think about our consumers, and that's already going to be a major project. And if we have two major projects going, that means we're going to have to, what are we going to do with the folks who need to eat lunch every day? So we really have to be thinking about consumers of the space as well, about how we make that happen. Now, a study is not going to shut anything down, they're just going to come in and look. But if we start moving things around, we really have to, we can, we can make it happen if that's what you all want us to do. But just letting you know that there are some other pieces that we have been waiting for, some, some changes and some updates.
Okay, I think you have a decision.
Okay. All right.
All right, good deal. So it's 19 till, let's adjourn the work session to after the formal meeting. And so we'll see you all at 7 o'clock. So here, I have a suggestion, and mainly it's that we not consider items IP 7 and IP 8, that we defer consideration of them to our next meeting, because it is a quarter till 11.
I would agree.
And I think we also have to figure out a listening post, that's the other thing I know of that was on in that package that we could mention. I suggest we not do that either tonight. So is there anything anybody thinks we really need to consider before we go home?
No.
I'm sorry, maybe I spoke too quickly.
I didn't get what you said, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm basically saying, it's late, we're all tired, let's not do any more work sessions.
Tony wants to bring something up.
That's legal language, but, you know.
Yes.
Work session is adjourned. Thank you.